Background. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council's special meeting with for Tuesday, October 11. With that, I'll have everybody go around the room and introduce themselves.
Jonathan Sider, Park Commissioner. I'm Joe Smolow, Covington City Council.
Jeff Powell.
Steve Pan, Parks and Recs.
I almost said Commission, City Council.
You got promoted.
You get promoted. Sorry.
Steve Pan, Parks Commission.
I'm Beth Porter, City Council. Jennifer Harjehov, City Council.
Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Mr. Bates, City Clerk Executive Assistant.
And.
Oh.
Sean Smith on the council too.
Thank you, Sean. And Sean. With that, I will turn this over. We have, I have to accept the priority of the public sector and the community.
So thanks for taking the time to chat with us and we sit in rather than getting to our interesting parts that we're going to take kind of deep dive into and do part things, sharing the things that we see as just one of the community and things that are important to us. So I thought, just really quickly, I know we've all shared our names, but the Park Commission would introduce themselves to me, because we don't share whatever as well. We've got two commissioners who aren't here. I can use them really quick. One, Amy Arnold, she's a mom of four, super active in sports and soccer, which is why she's not here for the fall. And then we also have Charles Robb, who's a teacher, and I also. For Marcy, I think most of you have seen me around at Covington, you're around a lot, but. Don't know, I've been living Covington for almost 15 years now. I have four children of my own that were grown up here. I'm a avid user of Parks and Trails myself, both in my recreation and for my kids, because they do have a few parts of trails to cool. We love it all, great passion about developing parks and making them, thinking that.
Sure, I'm Steve Pan. I've been on the Park Commission since 2007. I've lived in this area, but since before Covington was the city. And I was also on the Economic Development Council.
Share whatever.
Jeff Powell, I'm trying to get a dog park in town. A dog really can't do that. Covington, I've been here 12 years. I grew up kind of out Ravensdale, all around this area, maybe plus years.
And the commission's men, we believe, have a good reputation. It's annoying, we should be very inclusive in the property that we acquire. Um, okay, so in front of you, we have this little thing that you can put together, just kind of, we have very sidebar discussions tonight. And we'll share, I think I'm going to end up doing probably more talking than you might want me to do. But if you guys have questions or things you want to interrupt, please go ahead. This is like a set all about the guy who all of them, right? So dividing up and it's hard for me to tell sometimes how much you know about parks and how much you know. Sometimes I feel like we get exposed to this all the time, but you guys don't. And so this is kind of broken up into sort of the very basic of what we're operated under. So we wanted to just come and thank you guys first of all, because as a city council, as kind of the directors of funds and then even priorities. You guys, I like, really don't know how we do. And so the fact that you guys are supportive of aquatic, aquatic, recreation, the bench programming, those happen and means a lot. Thank you. Especially post COVID as things have ramped up. And people are hungry for things to do. So along with that, we have the income and those costs night, which we're aware and have to be maintained. And again, that will be guys' priority. So, um. Going to Parks Commission. I felt like one of the things that we were putting on the cusp of doing was expanding, and the first step in expanding is acquiring property. And we've been doing that for the parks, Department President, acquiring quite a bit of property. So under number two of projects, we have some new property with Jenkins Creek Park that we're all about, which we were aware of. That is going to be like the entrance to the park. It is amazing to me how many people have not mentioned this park because I live four minutes from that park. My neighbor across the street informed me last week that she just discovered that park. She's lived there for two years. It's just incredible to be coming, people don't know that park is there. And so we are excited as a commission to work, promote parks within Covington to have this more visible entrance to Jenkins Creek. So that more people understand that what it is. This is going to be a very, very exciting thing to have more people moving to that. Jenkins Creek tends to have a reputation for not being most safest feeling there. And so also when more people that would get moving to that park, it's better of moving to that. Reputation, it's like pretty strong of a word, another one right now, so. And I don't even like to invoke that idea out loud, but I know that if I, you can't often ignore the fact. So that is in progress. So you guys, I'm sure all state buildings, they're gone. And so construction will begin on the parking lot, welcome area and entry point. And that would consider. We also have SoCo Park going on, and I know you guys have been part of that. We've seen the same things that we have seen in terms of the planning and the things that are happening there. And then with Covington Community Park, we're trying to think, we are getting a field. Fields, I still out in the community, having kids to play on this field, with friends to play on this field. Get lots of months in compliments for how great that field has. I guess compared to other fields in the area are. And so, yeah. So I were happy that we could keep it that way and keep it going. We had jumping to maintenance, because maintenance department, um, we're talking about quick maintenance. They were so fun to come off the field. So we're, we're happy to see that we're going to continue that field to the level that has been passed. Start high and then just.
And it might be fewer, or do we have a start date for the.
Oh, yeah, no, John.
Yeah, we did get updated schedule, I believe, recently. I believe both for that and the SoCo Park project, we're aiming to do 90% this fall, going to permitting. Construction documents ready to go, like bidding around March. And so construction next summer.
If you guys have any other questions about the projects that are ongoing.
I have a question about your perception of maintenance of the parks. I would love your honest feedback, that's something when I was on prepack, that we were the prominent of pushing funding for that. And so I'm curious what the commissions feedback. And not just Park, the Aquatic Center, been there all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
I have lots of personal.
I feel like they could talk a whole meeting. But Jeff, or even before I talk about this, you guys want to share your thoughts on.
I, I think they're doing the best they can with what they have. It's about what does I, could we do better? Absolutely, but they would need more resources.
They tried to hire a couple of people over the past summer. I guess it didn't mean.
Yeah, for the seasonal positions. I think it's for, for a number of years that we haven't been able to hire.
Yeah, sometimes they've gotten, gone modern, kind of worked very. For a number of years, we've actually had challenges filling all of our seasons. But now, and there would be like a select number of applicants, but now we're not even getting, it's like nothing. Yeah, just.
And I would, just to add, I would say that we're recognizing that at the staff level, and it's in the proposed budget to revamp the staff levels a little bit, get rid of the seasonal positions, convert them to full-time positions, so.
Obviously, if they don't, there's no benefits of that, or do we know why?
There, there's probably a long discussion.
Okay, alright.
But we have looked into incentivizing, even in the previous years, bumping, trying to get people to come back. And we have gotten some, it's just over time, we'll face some of the challenges, even if not just seasonal, but even hiring in the last couple of years, in a kind of way.
It's. One of the top issues.
It's not unique to us.
It's. Yeah, one of the top issues has been the additional unemployment benefits that the, that people receive in the last couple of years. That made it really difficult, because they were making as much on unemployment as you're paying them now in wage. We do have some decision cards that you'll see as we go through the budget, but hopefully should fix this problem and change up the structure of the department.
You have better success with regular hires versus seasonal?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely, you can see a little bit of it, you have to be with some of that too, but yeah. Relatively.
Jennifer, circle back, your question is really well timed, because we just had Jesse at our office meeting, and he went through our planning. One question that I like to ask, that I can ask for a little bit since I have been chair and have received these reports, is if you could staff at your ideal level, what additional? And it seems like we are consistently staffing at about half of the ideal level of partaking. Now, we're talking ideal, ideal and realistic, you know, a lot of time we're two to the face. But Stephen's correct when he says that, they're really doing the best they can. Actually, they're doing an amazing job with the resources that they have. But their resources, I feel like are struggling to be read. I, I'm a distance runner. I spend a lot of time running around Covington. As I was running for Jenkins Creek Park a couple of weeks ago, I thought, gee, this is great. And again, not, not because maintenance is a poor job, but they just don't have the resources. And the individual, George, volunteer who was really taking on Jenkins Creek Park, stepped back. And I was a volunteer, and she used to do that, but that's a little hole that we are relying on. And so I would think, we're building this parking lot and that goes entrance to the park, which is needed. But we're inviting people into this park that's a little shabby. And so that's, that's tough, you know, these types of trade offs, knowing there's not enough resources, there's not enough time, there's not enough money to pass around the whole city so that everything looks and is where we want it to be. These are the decisions you guys have to make, and I don't envy them to you, but just something to be aware of. We invite the public into the park, and we do want them to go. Most of what I saw that I probably shabby set to be. So that is kind of one of the things that we are very aware of as a commission, just that tension between what maybe can do with the resources that they have, everyone that needs that. To fight the work that we have in part. And students and the resources that are.
That's the impression that I get as well, you know, we're at CCP a lot, the Aquatic Center a ton lately, because my four children have enough swim lessons and sea courses and all that. And it just, since COVID, has not recovered. And I, I know that it was a struggle before, and I mean, I hesitate even making comments, because I know people are doing the best that they can. But then also, as an elected official and as a taxpayer, you shouldn't feel bad, right? So, you know.
And the Aquatic Center, I mean, that kind of segue is right into that, not like a whole thing in and of itself. I think that everybody realizes that we do need to do something with the Aquatic Center. I, I hope, and as a commission, we definitely have a goal to advance, not, I hope they know we actually do not have an Aquatic Center. That's something that. The Aquatic Centers right now, I mean, we have, are working here now, where they work there.
Not working, but going to swim.
Okay, yeah. And I don't know how your experience has been finding things up, but from the people that I.
Hell. I, I am poised to register ASAP. I mean, it is extremely difficult to get into our swim lesson, so much so that I signed up for the YMCA, couldn't get into swim lessons there either. I mean, it is extremely, extremely difficult to register for safety swim lessons at our pool. It is crazy.
Is there even a remote ability? And maybe, I don't think we could, maybe there's been talk of it to prioritize Covington residents first? Or is that illegal?
Yeah, you can do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we can look at. I mean, we've talked at the staff level, just to kind of play some scenarios out as far as like practically speaking, like how would that work? How would that work with our registration system, things like that? We're at the very early stages of looking at that, but I mean, that's definitely kind of a policy call that we would take after the commission council to say, is that a direction you want us to be? Once we figure out if it's.
Sure. It's just, it's, I understand, and I'm, I'm very much in support of going outside of the boundaries of Covington. But we do have a job to do, and we represent Covington. Whether that means the first 48 hours of this season's, like 40, it's not much.
True.
It's, it's just like.
It could also incentivize other communities to be more active, take it as a central.
Years ago, we talked about doing it, and there was, there was a concern that other communities would then do that to our residents, prioritize their sports over, over us. And so, I mean, it's, it's, it's out there, but.
What's the biggest?
We're the, we're the taxpayers.
Friends in Maple Valley, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I can appreciate, I think we talked about this before, where there's this reciprocity of, we're giving everybody the same rate, whether you live in Covington or not. I know that wasn't always, if I want to go to Maple Valley and play around the golf, I'm getting the same cheap rate as their resident. But maybe that might be an easier gap with the charging non-residents a little bit more, it might help keep.
One of the reasons that wasn't a great plan was we didn't ask for proof that the person who would, who was coming in from Maple Valley or Enham Law actually lived in Covington. They just said they did, and we said, okay, and pay them because they're mine, isn't that right? So.
You have to.
Yeah, verify.
Verify. Sure.
But. It's a really great subject. It's something Ethan and I have been throwing around as, as well, especially you pointed it out. We had a neighboring city pull out of, of a partnership we were in for this, and this might help incentivize their residents when they contact us, we say, we'll contact you soon.
We don't want it to seem like you live in any way.
Right.
That's the problem, right? But if our residents, we have a duty to.
Right.
Well, Maple Valley, this is one of their camps, their youth camps as well.
Yeah, they didn't, they're across the board, but they have a very popular summer camp, and I noticed, at least this last summer, I don't know if they've been doing it beyond that, but they have the priority registration. So it's not, it's something to look at, and I think if you look at the need or priority registration or whatever, you could bring those options back.
And it's not malicious, I think there's an understanding.
I mean, if you find your setup for stuff, never have I went to non-residency when I'm listed in California, either in an organization or. Of course, why would I pay a little more? I get the benefit of getting in on this.
Especially when you need so much help. We need, we have to figure something out about.
And going back to the beginning of it, where I asked Jennifer about her. It's horrible, because our lessons are so full.
Oh, I registered, and it was open all, I just hope my kid would pass for the next level.
And that's why I do, I just registered for like the next three, like, sorry, you're level five, three months, that's just how it is.
And that is nothing new. It's been that way for a long, long time.
It's not a word.
Do. Do we, so I'm hearing that, you know, some of the demand is beyond the services we can provide. Does the pool even have capacity? I remember in the past that we couldn't cram any more people in the pool. And then two, is it possibly also a staffing issue in that, you know, I know some pools can't get lifeguards. You know, there, I think Kent didn't have lifeguards at Lake Meridian much of this summer. So I'm wondering about those two things.
I mean, I, okay, so my two daughters work at. My impression is that it's broken down. So, and this, this kind of correlates into the whole aquatic recreation thing, they make, you guys have a little bit of that tonight. But we have a box pool, like a big giant, and at this point, those don't, they're, they're restrictive, there's only so much space. And for as long as I've been involved in parks, there have been more people wanting time in the water, a wild place. So I think, yes, part of it is like, we're a little political school, and then also, yes, I think part of it is staffing. My impression is that staffing is getting better in terms of being able to hire people on the pinch point is that they don't have trainers available to train the staff to higher levels of lifeguarding and swimming instructor. That has been kind of a pinch point. My impression is that they're figuring it out. We think it's probably my mom and I.
You largely are right. I mean, I think we are trending better in the staff in the pool, doing much better than actually a lot of each programs or other pools. We do kind of look at position, filling positions at the pool a little differently than a lot of other type of positions in the city, where if we can get a part-time lifeguard or swim instructor for a year, that's actually a nice, long time that we can have at work. But it might take three months to get them trained up as a lifeguard and then trained as a swim instructor. So there's a lot more training hours that go in for nine months of work than if you're training somebody out that's going to be the good agency. So it's always a little bit of a battle.
And the pool, like, a pool in the city, that is something that we need to explore. Like David said, we are a joint process going, that is now not a joint process. And so whatever we can do to, to make sure that we named a aquatic. Well, I mean, I'm very passionate about the pool and having that available, not just as a training facility for like the young kids in our community and teaching them to swim, and just the whole safety issue with that. When we live water, we were surrounded by lakes. But also the pool is such a great place for the team, to find them, to have their first job. It's an amazing place to work for them. So it really provides a dual benefit, it's purpose, it's actually water state to report, but there's a side benefit of being a help to young people. So whatever you guys can do to give us at the Aquatic Center, we are right behind you all the way. Okay. I feel like I could do a whole monologue about the pool, but anyway. Um, so that's under the planning, because that is something that as a commission and people who live in the city, we are aware of, we want to happen in the city. There's also the Jenkins Creek Trail, which is the little picture here. And that's right now being processed as a legislative request. And I'm super excited about any trail mentioned. The last two codes planned, we've got parks, recreation, open space planned. The number one request for my community has been trails, like eighty-six percent or something in the eighties, very, very, very high. And it would seem like trails would be easy to do, right? Put some gravel down, and you put a sign up, and we keep looking into that, which is. Adam and Ethan, do you want to give some details about this legislative request?
Let, let me preface it. The council, I haven't seen this yet, because our legislative agenda is not really defined very well.
Okay.
So this is one of the proposals that will be submitted to the council at your next council meeting to include as a priority. So now you know, now you know. But it's been, it's been a known kind of vision that there'd be a trail on this corridor. Apply for grant two years ago, and get funding for it, but we have the road project running in their way. Five six, we're going to three, and there's a trail, there's an underpass, that's amazing to get that already, that'd be probably the most expensive part of the trail, saying you need to get done, and that'll already be the place. So it's now kind of connecting us with the point of the book. Let me just state something a little bit about the vernacular and how we work through this legislative item. If it's talked about as a giving of funding to Fund B or Transportation, pedestrian transportation quarter work, there won't be funding. If it's a recreation trail, I know that sounds dumb, but then there is, it could go into a capital. Yeah, it could go into a capital budget, and there's different, there could be funding there. So that's how, how we'll be presenting it, just as you're talking about it. Also protect the recreation movement. So if somebody gets hurt on it.
That company who likes to move is, there are a couple of pinch points in Covington that's very hard for me to feel like I can get to the safety. So one is the bridge over highways, and one is the, and getting the traffic. Just because of the amount of traffic and. Just because of the amount of traffic and the sidewalks and the sidewalks are very long, and I'm passing six. When traffic, that means six potentially gonna. So being able to safely cross can hang in regular, it's huge. So just in terms of like pedestrians, this is a really a big. And I know we can say, well, we say that it's a recreation. It is a recreation trail, it might get used for other things, but it is a recreation. People want to be able to go out on foot and get to where they need to go. And usually it's somewhere with a destination. So they want to go to a natural spot, or they want to go to a store, like they're just going to walk and buy something from that home. And so connecting this trail in from Jenkins Creek through Soho, and then we have the potential to come home. That was there, that's going to give people a destination. And so. When I moved to Covington, I felt like, oh my gosh, this is crazy, this is so amazing, and I'm seeing the people of that fall into place, and it's super exciting. My personal opinion is that an aquatic center is really. But I think also the walkable connection, what people can get on foot is really. The walking part, that's not just parts that encompass the sidewalks and that's because of the public work. And all the different departments that are in the city have moved and they've helped make it feel possible. Because if it's not a trail for me, it's going to be a sidewalk, and there's lots of them, and I feel actually very safe moving to Covington for itself because of the really big sidewalks. It really, really much. And so we've done a great job with that, and so now it's making those connections kind of out to the neighborhoods. So that you can bring people in on foot. And it can really. For the ones that established.
What is the funding that we're asking?
For this? Two, second. Two, five, two million, yeah, two million. I mean. My mic is low. Two million will not give you that full trail segment. But it might get us the planning for the full trail segment, and then whatever.
We can get into a little bit more when we discuss legislative agenda, but because it's going under the capital budget request. It's ideal to keep it around the one and a half million kind of range, but we.
Laura, what, what's the distance between the two parks, so the trail distance?
Estimate based on how long I would think we'd run between the two, we might have a more precise.
It's about a mile, maybe a little shorter than a mile.
So again, park commission, citizens, people who live here, this is, we are all for this. The thing that I pop it, and this I feel like is kind of like. I think this trail is all. Built on. Um, Steve, did you want to say anything about.
Well, what I wanted to mention is I. You know, you guys are going to be facing, you council members are going to be facing some really tough decisions on funding, financing, and how to go forward. When I got on this commission in two thousand and seven, this, this was a train. I mean, we had no rec programs, we had no parks director, we had no parks staff, it was nothing except the commission. A lot of you probably don't know that that beautiful park we have out there was one council member vote from not being there. I mean, it was that close, and there were, we had. You can. We had a city manager that I wouldn't press as far as you can throw him, as far as whether he was supporting the parks or not. We've come so far, so far, we're, but we're still like a ten-year-old Honda that's been kept up pretty. We still have a few things to do to really, to really push this. Yeah, so, I mean, we, we have, we have a great city manager behind the parks, we have a great parks director. And we've got the, the, you guys have done a wonderful job. You know, taking the properties that come our way, we only get one shot at these properties, there's, I've never seen a second shot at a single one of the properties that have been coming forward to the, to the parks. We, we got to put that all together as we have a community that continues to grow with a lot of multifamily housing, those, those kids need places to go. They need, you know, places to play, and we've got some of the properties we need to do that. But it's going to require some really brave and tough decisions on your part, you, you might have to. Even when that, when the vote came in for that, for Covington's community, the economy was a shambles. And the, this, the, the city's advice was, well, I don't know if we can do it. I think is really what it came down to, I don't know if we can do this. And the council went ahead and voted for it, and now you have that big, beautiful park out there, and that was a tough, bold decision by that council at that time, thank you, Jeff. And you may, you may find yourselves in that position, and if you do, I, I encourage you to think about that part, what it's meant to the community. And that one decision has made such an impact for kids, for now almost a generation. So. Thank you for what you've done, and thank you what you, for what you will do, I know, to try to keep this moving up towards the Cadillac someday, someday.
Steve mentioned acquisitions, and we've got some, which is exciting, and like Steven said, we don't get a second chance, the land comes up, we take it or we. And so we thought, what we're calling Covington Park, the so far. Behind the Flintstone Church, the Flintstone Church. Park Commission went to the door, and we knew that area, beautiful. Very, yeah, very beautiful. I'll be excited to see, as we master plan it, if we get community input, what we really want to see that park become. One thing that I hopefully can include is a connection between those two neighborhoods, because again, with walkability. Those two neighborhoods, this side of the church and this side of the church are completely separated, there is no way to move on foot between them unless you really. And so providing a connection, a walk. That's exciting. So that is, that's going to be exciting, but also don't have a park over the map part. So this info part really provides the map place a lot of room. To give those communities surrounded by. Jenkins Creek, and we talk about the acquisition for the entrance, welcome, that we call. And then Soho, the just unexpected opportunity part, to purchase two more parcels right next to it. And I think that my, my feeling is that those two parcels and what we're able to do with the park, in addition to the regard and how those two parts are really going to make the park. Being able to put those pickleball or getting there. To the level of six, right?
Yeah, enough for a tournament.
Right, right. And so I have a feeling that that kind of. So it's been great that these acquisitions come off them and that we need to come forth and. Once the land is a parking lot. Parking lot. Um. And then the pictures down below, the end of question. I don't know who drives that Covington community park from how often, but. I think the only time that I've ridden by and I have not seen people at the playground. All the time, it can be raining outside, people are. It's very much. And I hear compliments about the playground, that's. And I think. I think one thing that we've really done well with Covington Park, is we made it a place where all of the kids can back and go to the park. And as a mom of four kids, that's important to me because I have time and span, and I don't want to, I want to take my kids to one place where everybody can have a good time. Instead of just, again, reaching out and having a good time, and holding the board, so playing. And so Covington Park, we've done a really great job with that, and the commission can keep that in mind. In fact, that we have a thing that is multi-generational, especially with the different. So we want to make sure that it's a place where local agents and abilities can go and recreate together. And then just what we can be able to do. The things that the parks and parting parts have been doing since COVID, we're excited about, well. There have been so many new activities, we've been able, over the summer, it feels like we went from nothing, it's COVID, and. Floating. And so, again, the commission, we're talking about that.
Exploded, right?
We're excited about that, and. Again, we're totally. Again, back to the pool. We put out that we wanted to break forward to you guys. This is what we talk about as a commission, I know individually, we all have our things that are important to us. Since we have a minute. And there's only three left here, I thought I just, but I'll share individually what's important to us, and then if there's any questions, we can chat. Jeff, I know what you can talk about.
Where the squirrels from breathing. Still love to get a dog park somewhere. She wanted somewhere. You go. Now you go.
It's such a common. I mean, it's been coming up. In every survey, in every.
Yeah, I would say behind pickleball, it's probably.
It's not a pickleball.
You have to have a pretty good sized space.
And that's the thing, if you put one in, it's going to get a lot of use, so it can't be a small. Small-sized dog park, and then it's got to be a parking. Looking for that within the city is challenging. But, you know, maybe it's. You know, we haven't, we haven't really dedicated resources to really doing exciting analysis. That's probably what you'd want to do, is look at opportunities. You're outside the city, like. The pros and cons of doing that farther away from the population, outside the city.
I probably, I haven't. That, that little swath, I mean, Caroline, does that belong, like, the one that goes from CCP up to two fifty-six? Is that like DPA property? That would probably not be in the number of the. Giving some of that up.
Geography wise, I don't think it would work well, it's got flatlands in there. It'll be difficult enough to put a trail in or something, but probably not. But I think that, you know, I think. It is a huge need that we're hearing, and. It probably will take a little bit of. Is there a property that could that be?
And one thing you can mention is that I have no opportunity, I'm hanging out in parks, we have a community. When you say something's where you get a lot of use, you have lots of.
And parking.
Yeah, yeah, so that's just one more P, the big plus.
Grandview Dog Park is, I believe it's private, but it's all self-maintained, basically by volunteers that. That's a big, that's thirty acres.
Now somebody would just donate some land. We can put it out in the community, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get. How much space is ideal?
Maple Valley Dog Park. Not, not that big, but it's, you know, it's still a kind of a good size. Where that will part of the community, but after you start getting thirty dogs and you're.
I think Maple Valley is actually the footprint, might be around two acres, and that doesn't be part. Take Moral Meadows, which is ten stop part over behind the line in C A is small. I think it's actually a larger. It's smaller, it's about, I'd say maybe, but they cut it in half, and then you put the lines.
About River Ranch.
Yeah, really tiny.
Really small.
That's.
As big as the inside.
Like a top run.
Oh, yeah, it is, but it.
People always wait in line to go in.
Again, demand.
No, I don't think so, I mean, you know, my, my goal has always been to just keep it moving forward and. Keep improving where we can and get as much money out of the legislature as we can to help fund this stuff, so. Keep, please keep doing what you're doing, because you're doing a fine job.
I could like say, I want all of one. But I think if I had, pick one thing to grab on my. Some type of new facility for. Something.
You know, I might add, get that out of leased property so that we, we have total control over it.
My personal vision, I would love to see an aquatic. Or area where Covington Elementary is, with a splash pad like right nearby, which makes sense to have the two aquatic pools near each other and. Chemicals, shopping, that type of thing. But I would, I'd love to see that kind of as that core, grows up to be a community center, which I think is the vision for it. I can do that every year.
Everybody knows we don't own that property, right? Does everybody here know we don't own that property? Right, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, they're, yeah, they can, they can scratch, they can scratch the lease.
Yep.
You don't own the building anymore, so, I mean, it's done. And it wouldn't be the first time that they wanted that property for something else.
I think, I think right now, if you're doing an elementary school, that's your mom, but.
You talking like Henry Moses style, or a smaller version of that maybe?
I say Henry Moses.
We are constrained by what our community needs and what. So if we do whatever we do or whatever we.
That's one of the only ones that actually funds itself, so.
Which one?
They actually.
I.
Yeah, it's one of the two in the country that actually support itself entirely.
Matter of. Which is why it was a joint effort, because big elaborate buildings like that. You know, really expensive, and they take a lot. expensive, and they take a lot of money to support. You can't support through like that off of, the numbers don't, unfortunately. So, yes, I will take it all, Henry knows, like, all of it, I will take it all, but I also know that we probably cannot afford it all. So whatever we can do in the couple, the city, and we're right behind you as a commission to. All the way, so. And I think, you know, the tough thing is there's, I really think there's support for the idea in the community, but when the push comes to shove, you're connected to me, what I want this, and I have to be more, and if you want something together, I don't, I don't have.
There's so many competing priorities in the people's wallets.
Yeah.
Yeah. We want all of it, especially now.
Where we, usually when we run things, it seems to be about the same time when King County's got a big ask, you know, asker. So we're on the same ballot as some big ask out of King County, and that doesn't work out so well.
There's all of these good things, things that we would like to have. The bottom line that we've got to give the commission is, let's just maintain, let's maintain where we are, let's not slide down, maybe we can't push forward if we want to, but let's maintain. And I think that we've been doing a great job of maintaining and then some, especially with the recreation, certainly, they maintain and then some. And so I know that the department is kind of like trying to find the balance in all of that, because it takes a lot of staffing to do some of these things. But again, like as the commission, we come in before you saying, hey, these are all the things that we want, you guys have to. So I would love to be at the very end, and I would love, be on love, be on love to see things grow and develop, and our motto, grow towards greatness. I would love to see the parks grow towards greatness, and you can see that's the only fire. But I also. I'm going to take on, there's so many. That's, I think, my kind of closing statement, if anybody has any questions, we'll talk to answer them, but thank you guys for that, for taking the time to dive into this.
But thank you, and thank you for reading, but very nice to admire the energy and the energy and the entire mission, which is all of the topic.
Like I said, you guys make the hard choices, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll be public meeting here, and we'll be starting in a couple minutes or a half.